Good evening, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2015. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright.
Here.
Belville.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Great, we're all here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its essence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, as this board convenes, I would like to remind us all while we're here that a couple of years ago, we spent quite a bit of time talking about our mission, and I'd just like to read that, to remind us why we are here. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So if we can do that, we'll be in good shape, I think, here in our district. So, the first item on our agenda tonight is our superintendent's report. Dr. Messenger.
Good evening, President Albright, members of the board, welcome. A few items I'd like to share with you this evening. We are in a planning process right now with the, for the construction of our new schools, which you are familiar with, and so last week, we had two community evening meetings with Erie Community as well as the Emerald Community. We're in what we call the visioning and programming portion of our work with Fielding Air International, and so we have had day-long meetings with members of the community, and then open community sessions in the evening, and so this week, we'll be at Douglas and Creekside, and next week at Centara. So, anyway, I just want to report to you, there's two down and going really well, kind of got the process started and opened up the dialogue, and we are doing some online presence with this, so folks who weren't able to attend can see what they missed in the presentations, and also there will be opportunity for folks to provide the same kind of input we did in the sessions, but be able to do it online. And then they're going to do what they call the discovery report, which is really the collection of all that good thinking that has gone in at this stage, and then that will come back to us later this month, and then there will be opportunity for that to be viewed again publicly, be shared with you, obviously. And then there'll be yet another round of meetings, and also opportunity for the community to come in and give comment on that, and that's just part of our early foundation planning process around programming, and eventually it becomes a school building, obviously, and a campus, but some really rich conversations and good thought going into that. So, just wanted to give you an update, I shared with you a week or so ago, the schedule for those meetings, and of course, they're all public, and if you individually would like more information, don't hesitate to contact our office, and Susan Cousins is serving, of course, as our communication specialist with bond planning work, as well as Tiffany Lychuk and Don Orr and our whole team. So, anyway, don't hesitate to ask if you'd like additional information. A real quick update on the strategic plan, again, a lot of good work going on. Some of the work we did around the planning for the exemplar schools, which we shared with you when we gathered back in August with precaution Iear, was what we refer to as innovation guidelines, and so those are, have been developed based on the input from teacher leaders and principals and now community, so those will help shape some of the programming within the new schools and exemplar schools, but also tightly align with our strategic plan, so that we don't have competing or parallel plans, but really one set of outcomes and expectations. And the innovation guidelines will not only inform the planning around the exemplar schools, the new schools, but also each school as they look at their innovation and their work going forward. So, some have major remodeling, some have less so, but they'll take advantage of their innovation dollars within their phase, Phase 1 right now, 18 schools in Phase 1. So, that work is going on around that with the success effect, and October 20th, we have a work session with you on the strategic plan, so we're looking forward to giving you an update on that. Pieces are coming together nicely, and we'll be able to set some benchmarks out for you and give you some specific examples of work that's going on today around the strategic plan. You just finished a meeting with the District Accountability Committee, and so you heard a few of those things, but we'll have a complete report for you in October around that. Last Tuesday evening, Dr. Ron Cabrera, Leslie Arnold and I joined the District Accountability Committee to introduce a little more of where we are with the strategic plan, and to begin to see how they can focus their work around that going forward as the Accountability Committee. Really good planning going on around the data warehouse, we will talk more with you about that, we'll provide you a written update. Again, we're working on the planning the fall term, and then we'll do an RFP mid-year, and then have a selection made by spring, and then our plan is to launch operative data warehouse by next fall. Again, more details on that, but I just want you to know, a lot of good planning, Leslie Arnold and Andrew Moore are leading that effort for the school district. The other thing is, a week ago, we shared with all the school leaders the goals that will be embedded in their school improvement plans, school by school, level by level, that will align with the strategic direction of the district. So, where we've been working on this for some time, this is now, it's launched, it's coming off the ground, we will expect each of the schools to submit to their assistant superintendent, respective assistant superintendent, their plan, their school improvement plan for the 15, 16 school year by November 6th, sooner if they haven't completed, and then we'll be doing follow-up visits with each of those schools to talk about their plans, their school accountability committees, and so on. So, all of that's pretty consistent with what we just talked about in the District Accountability Committee meeting, but we feel very good about this work going forward. Switching gears, a real quick update on Casey Middle School air quality. We are in process working with NIOSH, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, which is a division of CDC. Dr. Ryan LeBeuf is taking lead on this health hazard evaluation that I've mentioned a couple of times to you, so I know some of you maybe have had contact or will have contact with Dr. LeBeuf, and I, we gave him two long lists of names of parents and staff members and community members who have an interest in this topic, and so I think he's reaching out to them. We distributed and communicated to the parent community a week ago, I think, regarding this health hazard evaluation and contact information if they would like to weigh in. One of the questions that we've been asked is, information they share with NIOSH, will it be kept confidential, and I sent you a note at the end of the day, but basically it said, anything that has a personal nature would absolutely be kept confidential, if it's a statement of fact and the source of fact, so like maybe reports out of our offices, he would attribute to where the source was and who might have provided that. So, I think the appropriate protections that folks might be concerned about will be embedded in that, and I would encourage them just to visit with them if they have any questions about it. So, I'll keep you informed as that goes forward. Again, we're probably looking for a report around October sometime, is what Dr. LeBeuf has indicated most likely. There was a nice news feature a week or so ago about the One to Web project at Centara's High School, you're going to get a chance to hear about that this evening. Kelly Sein and Andrew Moore are going to give you a report in your agenda about our work with One to Web, and also both at Centara's and Brimfield High School, some really positive energy coming out of both of those initiatives, so more on that later. Next week, I will be at the State Superintendent's Conference, so that's the Colorado Association of School Executives, we'll also be complementing that with the meeting of the superintendents, the coalition we have formed, and I'm one of the organizers for that, working with some of my peers around the state, and so we have well over 100 registrants for that, so we're looking forward to engaging in a in-depth conversation around Building a Better Colorado, we'll be a part of that, that initiative that's going on in the state right now, and also anticipating some leadership opportunities we're going to have in this upcoming legislative session, which some of you are tracking in the Denver media, that this could be a fairly challenging legislative session as we go into it around funding in general, but particularly school funding, as the taxpayer bill rights is starting to really kick in with our robust economy. And the last thing I would mention is that some of us had the chance to visit Warren Tech, which is the Career and Tech Ed Center for Jefferson County Schools, so they extended an invitation for several of us to go down under the leadership of Dr. Mark Schaefer, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. We're working with our Career and Tech Ed, early on, our leadership of our Career and Tech Ed staff to do some visioning around the Arapahoe Campus, around Career and Tech Ed, and also for our whole school district, because our secondary schools have Career and Tech Ed programs. This was last done around the time of the last bond, in '06, when some work was done on that campus, and as we anticipated, not in Phase 1, but in Phase 2 or 3 doing work on the Arapahoe Campus, we saw this was an opportunity to refresh our thinking around what our vision is around Career and Tech Ed, and so you'll hear a lot more about that. We had a really educational experience at Warren Tech, they have a lot going on in that facility. It is the center that serves the entire Jefferson County School District, so like 1,400 students come from all of their different high schools, but a program that was developed in the '70s and is pretty contemporary, has kept up with a lot of nice infusion of technology, so we know we can't replicate it, so it's got a big footprint, but certainly is a nice resource. We're also visiting similar kinds of centers or programs in the region outside of Colorado as well. It's probably the only center like that in the state of Colorado, at least of that magnitude. So, anyway, a nice field trip that I participated in, and it really was our team that went down, I think came back with a lot of good information, and they're very willing to work with us as we go forward and be our partners in it. So, anyway, with that, I will conclude my report, I'd be glad to answer any questions about these topics or any others the board would like. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, sounds like you've been busy, and with the start of the year, too.
That's going on.
So, board members, any questions or comments for Dr. Messenger? Jenny.
So, Bruce, could you remind us what Building a Better Colorado is exactly?
So, this is, there was an article in the Denver Post a couple of weeks ago, this is, I guess I would say, an effort, a bipartisan effort, it would appear, to look at some of the issues or obstacles that are really in the way of Colorado progressing the way they would like, and clearly, or the way that some of us would like. So, I think, you know, one of the major issues that they're looking at is the taxpayer bill of rights, and so what, are there, are there changes within that or provisions within that, that's within the power of the legislature or the vote of the people to address that? But there are also issues around term limits, and so they, they've generated about a half a dozen topics that there is statewide conversation going on. So, this coalition of individuals, leaders, not all elected leaders, some past governors and business leaders are really, I would say, in the exploratory phase of what might be doable for the state that would help us be in a better place, and what might that look like, and when might it occur? So, I think that a target date would be not this November, but November of '16. If something were on the ballot, that would, you know, make some decisions as a state around either modifying some constitutional provisions or laying some groundwork going forward. So, I would say it's early, very early in the process. Bill Sutter and I had a chance to hear a presentation on this when we were up at the Colorado Association of School Executive Summer Conference in July, and next week, I'll be briefed on it again. So, clearly, they're looking at different organizations, Case being one of them, I'm sure CASB will be another, I'm sure you'll hear more about this in the winter conference when you attend, about where, where the education community fits in this, but it's bigger than education, it really is, you know, I think it will touch transportation, health and services, so really public services, and, you know, because we're, I mean, what's happening right now is that we're having this immense conflict within our constitution around our world, supporting public education, keeping up with the cost of living and growth, coming in conflict with Tabor right now, and the need to start refunding money. So, I mean, that's just, that's our world, but there are other examples of that that are really creating hardships. You know, it'll be a difficult session, because as we experience a robust economy, everything's good, employment is up, unemployment's down, revenues are in, and we're starting to do rebates, and we're, you know, having trouble keeping up with public services now, which is just a difficult place to be. I mean, we understood that during the recession, it's hard to understand when we're in a robust economy to be doing that. So, that's, that's the initiative, and there are a number of folks involved at the state level.
Well, I hope that you'll keep us posted.
Senator Raleigh Heath and I had a conversation around this early in the summer when we had a breakfast meeting, and, you know, he's been, you know, locally, he has been involved in some of these conversations, but a lot of other, again, not all elected officials, some of them are business leaders and others.
So, and there may be an opportunity to inform the board in more detail going forward.
Yeah, I might have a briefing I can bring back even from next week and share it, so.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Okay, Bruce, I had a question, you were talking about the visioning that's happening at the schools.
Yes.
And that the process is started, and that parents, community people, teachers have an option to respond online?
Yes.
Where is that?
So, we, so the access point, and some of it's still being built, so I can't tell you exactly, I know it's online today, but with Susan Cousin and Tiffany Lychuk, we're, so if you go to the bond page, we've kind of told people to go to the bond page, because people could find the bond page by, because our main site, there's a link to the bond off of the main site, so you can get to the main site, get to the bond, then go in, and then we're creating, like, school by school, so you can go to Emerald, and so we did some videotaping last week, so we're going to try to embed that so folks can go watch if they missed the presentation, and then some, like a Google form, which you're all familiar with, about being able, so these are pretty broad, open-ended questions right now, just really, what do people want, what do they want to know more about, what do they like about thinking about their new school? And then again, there will be another community meeting as well, but what some folks have done is just emailed the superintendent and gave their input, and so I pushed that to the bond planning team, so, you know, we've just encouraged folks to, you know, get it, get our attention, and we'll make sure it's incorporated. So, this is really the open part of the process, and the media has been great about doing a couple articles on this, which has drawn some attention as well, which we appreciate. But the bond site is where I would encourage people to go.
So, any person could comment on any school, all schools?
Absolutely, yeah, because some wanted to see something, maybe overall, they would want us to consider, so they could do that, or just send us a note.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Well, stay busy.
You will do, we'll stay busy.
Keep going. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public hearing and participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons who address the board can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first. Limit your presentation to two minutes, if we go over, we'll continue at the end of the meeting. That won't happen tonight. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate statements that are unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium, it starts at green when you start your two minutes, it turns to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. So, you're at the podium, thank you for coming. We have two people who have signed up this evening, and they are Jane Theodore and Ted Rockwell. And Ted, you've been given two minutes, so you have four minutes, we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So, welcome, and thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to ask that this letter and video be, and the video statement be made part of the permanent record.
Oh, yeah.
Last week, our neighborhood received a letter tucked into each one of our front doors informing us of BVSD's proposal to place two 100-ton chillers in close proximity to our homes. Frankly, we were shocked. To the north of Southern Hills, where we live, there are property lines within about 50 feet of this proposed site. To the south of the school, there are no residences for at least half a mile, just tennis courts and fields. Not only does this show plain, not only does this plan show extreme disregard for the school's neighbors, the majority of whom currently have children at Southern Hills Middle School, but we also believe it's illegal under the Boulder Municipal Code. Section 595 of the Boulder Municipal Code is titled "Disrupting Quiet Enjoyment of the Home," and reads, "No person shall engage in or be responsible for a course of conduct that is so loud that it materially interferes or disrupts another individual in the conduct of activities at such individual's home." In Section 6, it states further, "Whether or not noise is so loud that it materially interferes or disrupts shall be measured against the objective standard of a reasonable person of normal sensitivity." Additionally, Section 8 states, "It is not a defense to a charge of violation of this section that the sound levels complied with the requirements of Section 593, exceeding decibel sound levels prohibited." In other words, not only must noise be below prohibited decibel levels, but in addition, a reasonable person must not find it objectionable. If you do a quick Google search on the terms "air chiller whining" or "air chiller tonal noise," you'll find plenty of examples that reasonable people would find objectionable. Ask yourselves, would you want to live with the grinding noise of two 100-ton chillers right outside your window? We understand that architects and acoustic specialists will make advance promises regarding noise levels and show you videos of their prior successes. However, every installation is different, with many complex factors that may or may not have been properly modeled in the acoustic studies. In this case, there is a massive brick wall that reflects sound all directions towards nearby residences. There are many documented cases of such noise level estimates by engineers failing when the equipment is actually built, and also a number of documented failures to isolate problems stretching on for years. In the meantime, nearby residents lived with the whining, the grinding noise, the sonic equivalent of the stench of rotten garbage, to the detriment of their health and well-being, let alone the disruption of the quiet enjoyment of their home and peaceful backyards. All this is to say nothing of the acoustic problems that develop as the system degrades over time. By its own admission, in the bond initiative, the BVSD often does not have adequate funds available for maintenance. No engineer can predict project outcomes with full certainty, and placing such equipment right next to adjacent property carries risk of failure that are so large as to render this proposal unworkable. To proceed with this plan would also place BVSD assets at risk as well. Earlier this year, the San Diego School District was successfully sued by a neighborhood group who argued that high wattage lights were an unreasonable intrusion on their quality of life and carried illegal environmental impact. The lawsuit was costly to all parties, and has left the improvement project, also funded by a taxpayer bond initiative, dead in the water. It is on account of these clear and present risks that we implore you to come up with a new plan, one that does not destroy the quality of life for nearby residents and cause unreasonable environmental impacts. Please, again, ask yourselves, would you be willing to live with the grinding noise of two 100 chillers right outside your window? And the undersigned are the neighbors from the Southern Hills Middle School area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, thank you for providing this document as well, it's good to have this information. Okay, thank you for coming this evening. We typically don't respond, but there could be questions in the board comments, if you'd like to wait, or just if you're not in a rush to leave. Yeah, okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is board communication. So, board members, any comments? What have we been doing? Tina?
Thanks so much for coming tonight and speaking about the chillers. So, Bruce, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just pulled up a map of Southern Hills, can you, are the chillers to the north of Southern Hills?
So, the proposed location of that would be north of the school, yes.
In that plot of grass, that's sort of in the northwest section?
Well, they'd be on the, beside the building.
Okay, and was there a community, any kind of a community meeting about the placement prior to the?
There have been conversations, and I just sent to you the letter that he referred to in his comments about a meeting that's going to be held tomorrow evening to engage in conversation with the neighbors about this. So, we've been working on this, and we plan to continue to work on it. So, the decision's not been finalized, we are, the engineering work has been done, and so we are in conversation with the neighbors right now. So, that was the letter he referred to, is what I just heard.
And are these just for use for Southern Hills, or?
Just Southern Hills, correct.
Okay, all right, thanks again for coming. Thank you.
Shelley?
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming as well, and it brings to mind, Bruce, the question of whether there's going to be community, because we have so much building going on now with the bond, what is going to be our format for getting community input before we do things like this?
So, we have a design advisory team of which community members serve on, as well as faculty and parents, so that's true of every one of our schools. So, every school in Phase 1, all 18 schools, have design advisory teams, so that's how we seek community input, then obviously other ways.
Right, so did the design advisory team have input, did they give?
This was discussed with the design advisory team previously, yes.
For?
And some of the concerns that you heard this evening were expressed in that meeting, is my understanding.
Okay.
And additional concern has been expressed and communicated to my office. So, that's our process. Yeah, we're going to touch 55 schools, so we're going to have opportunity for community dialogue on lots of issues.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward, I'm not sure we would have known about this issue if you hadn't come here tonight, so thank you.
I think there's a community member on the DAT, or something else, but I'll just put that out there.
I'll check.
Can we come back for another open public commentary to comment about that process?
Thank you.
Is this tonight, and we'll come back another time?
We'll continue to look at this issue, I mean, I think it's something that we're interested in, I guess, Bruce, I would just say, I personally would like to have some update on this with how the DAT is looking at this, and what you're, as you're continuing to work on it, what you think, it'd be great to go back in the next meeting or two.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else?
You'll find the communication I just sent to you informative, so.
Okay, thank you, I haven't looked at it yet. Tom?
Yeah, thanks again, I want to echo that for coming forward. We have a public complaint policy, policy KE and KE- R, I don't know if you're familiar with it, you can find out about it on our website under the About Us tab, Board Policies, and go to the K-Policies. And I would encourage you, if you have not done, to read that policy and file a public complaint here, and it'll help get this dialogue started as it works up to the Board of Education. So, that would be very helpful, so that has happened in the past, most notably in my memory with Bear Creek on some issues there under the construction, I don't know if you remember that or not, but certainly is my desire that we be as good neighbors as much as we can, and to work through all of these kind of issues that would impact the communities. So, thanks again for coming.
Anyone else?
On this topic?
Yeah, why don't we stick to this, we'll stick to this topic, yeah. Anyone else on this topic? Well, I, you know, there, we do have a complaint process, you're exactly right. I would urge, you know, the DAT to work with, you know, the, the community, to work with the DAT, it's a local issue, rather than having it necessarily rise to a complaint that the board needs to be engaged with, I mean, that's kind of a pretty long process. But, there's a lot of people on that street who are affected, and I think it's important to have your voice heard, you know, I'd work through the DAT and the staff there and staff here, so. Any other comments on this question? Okay, thank you, thanks for coming, too. All right, board members, any other board communication or comments?
So, I'd like to, Bruce addressed earlier the difficult legislative session coming up, and I'd like to encourage board members, CASB is having its fall meetings, and I forget when the fall meeting for our region is, but Sandy had sent out the information earlier, and those regional meetings, it's just an evening of your time, and that would be, I'd like to encourage people to attend if they can, because that's a really good place. One of the things that always happens at those regional meetings is that the CASB staff updates us on the, what's going on at the legislature and on their initial efforts, their initial contacts with the legislature, and what they're hearing from the legislators they've been talking to, and it's always, it's just good to have a heads up before the session actually starts, so that, and there are other things that go on at those meetings as well, but, but that's a valuable, I found it to be a valuable use of time. And then I'd just like to mention that I had the opportunity to visit Justice High, I think I, there was a visit last spring that I missed, and I certainly, and I understand that Justice High's contract is coming up for negotiation in the fall, but they certainly do, do work with students that, that have been difficult to, that haven't found good services in other schools, so I'd like to appreciate the work they're doing with, with a population of kids that are valuable, but sometimes have significant unique needs. And then, and I also attended the Brimfield Community Meeting, or the meeting that was before the community meeting with, and I'd like to, I think the work that's going on is really interesting and encouraging, and it's very exciting that we're doing this work, and I look forward to seeing how this, in another couple of years, I look forward to seeing a new building, and you build, and beautiful new space in, in other places in our district as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Tina?
You know, you brought up CASB, and I just wanted to also mention the Fall Delegate Assembly. I'm wondering who's going from our group, if that has been decided or if we've talked about it?
Yeah, you know what, I just looked at that date, and that was my fault, we should have talked about it at agenda setting. We do have a retreat next week that we could talk about it at, and we also have a regular board meeting on the 22nd, so we could give feedback to the person. I have not yet seen the booklet with the suggestions or the resolutions that have come forward, so I have not seen those, I don't know, I doubt, so I don't think we've gotten it yet, so I think we have time to discuss it at one of those two meetings, but you went last time.
I went last time.
That was great.
Yeah, and there was nothing too unexpected that happened, so I, I don't know what it will be like this year. I know they're encouraging whole boards to attend this year.
Right.
That's their theme, but I, so we should probably talk about that as well, I think that seems unlikely.
Well, we need to identify and appoint a person to represent us at the delegate assembly, which is September 26th, that's Saturday morning.
I think it's October 16th.
No, that's the CASB board meeting.
Sorry, 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 I'm in the wrong CASB thing.
Okay.
You're right, it's October 16th and 17th, it would be Saturday the 17th, sorry, I'm in too many meetings here. So, we have plenty of time to talk about it. So, let's get in on the agenda. So let's get in on the agenda of how to make that appointment, and that would be something we could talk about at our retreat, I think, next, next week that's scheduled. So thank you for bringing it up.
And Lori, can I add to that?
Sure.
And Shelley may be able to help with this, too. We both, you attended Federal Resolutions Network and I attended the Legislative Resolutions, and we both may be able to give brief presentations on, at some future meeting before the delegate assembly on, on what the recommendations of those two Casby committees were.
Okay.
And what the new, and what the new resolutions that will be coming up are.
Okay, good. All right. Shelley?
Yeah, I think about a week ago, I sent the board an email about this Nobel Circle statue that Don, I think it's Don McDonald's been working on, and I'm just wondering if I could get a feel tonight for how people feel about the district endorsing that, because the way this new agenda setting process is going is that if, if someone has a request like that the day after Agenda Setting, then it doesn't get talked about for another month, and then it's a, you know, you know, I don't know how long before it gets scheduled, and then it has to be discussed and, you know. I mean, it could take literally months for us to do this, whereas if there seemed to be like a sentiment for this, then at Agenda Setting, I, you know, the next Agenda Setting meeting, I would say, you know, let's move this up and, and do this, so. But I'd like to know if anybody has any thoughts about it, because it was the first time I had heard about it, and apparently a lot of effort's gone into that. VVEA has endorsed it, the governor's endorsed it, Chamber's endorsed it, so I'm just wondering, does anybody have any concerns? Yeah.
I think it's fine to offer some kind of endorsement as, as long as it doesn't cost the district money or other, you know, use of our tight resources. Mr. McDonald contacted me a couple of years ago about it, and I referred him to Dr. Messenger, so I support the idea, you know, it's something that we're proud of in this community and could inspire our students to see the monument to our Nobel laureates, so.
Okay, thanks.
Well, one, one thing we have talked about is whether this is something that, as individual board members, we value or believe, or whether it's important to hear from the community about what they want. You know, so it, it would just be interesting, is this something the seven of us would move forward, or is it important to ask others in the community about what the school districts view? Just a question.
But what would that look like?
I don't know.
It sounds like it would take a very long time to, I mean, just to get an approval of an endorsement that, you know, I'm guessing people would make, so. I'm asking this board, what do you think about that? I mean, do you, do you have concerns? Do you have, you know, reasons that you would hesitate? Yeah.
So, so I've got, so is there, is there some, not, not that I want to delay things, but is there some urgency to this, Shelley?
Oh, I think the guy's been working on it for years, and so his urgency is that, will we please say yes or no, because he wants to stop asking us, you know?
Okay, okay. I hadn't heard, I hadn't heard from him before, so.
I didn't, I didn't know that either.
So.
Not, not just this guy, there's a whole team of people.
So if we were to, if we were to calendar it, because we would still want to put it on a, on an agenda, a public agenda, and not just discuss it here, because I would, I, I don't have any objection to discussing it, I'm just not prepared to discuss it on the merits tonight, because I haven't looked that closely at all of the correspondence that went back and forth, but, but I would think that if we, we've only got, we've got one more meeting in September, that it wouldn't be that big a deal to discuss it, I mean, to just calendar it for some time in October if we, if we had the, if we had the October Agenda Setting meeting. I mean, I've, I've looked at our upcoming schedule, it doesn't look like we're that densely scheduled, and then you could present something to us about it, perhaps.
Or have them come and present it about it.
Yeah, so, and we could, we could discuss what that would look like. I mean, that would be the value of discussing it at Agenda Setting, but I don't think that would have to put it off for months, so.
Yeah, I would hope not. I mean, I, I think that, you know, a lot of the issues we deal with are so complicated, and it's not har, it's, it's very hard to make decisions about those things, but some things are pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I would just want to know, so if I were going to think about it, probably the only thing I would want to know is how does it relate to our mission as a, as a district, and is there any other, is there any further obligation on the part of our district once we endorse? And those would be the kinds of things I'd want to talk about, I mean, or hear about and then.
Yeah, yeah, he, he's already sent a letter to that effect.
Yeah, and I just haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
Tom?
So, yes, I'd be in favor of putting it on Agenda, and so we can talk about it. That would actually be out in the public, and people can see it, and if they have interest to come and make comments, it'd mean they could, and it would give us a chance to discuss it, and perhaps, you know, a presentation by the district on, on any issues associated with that would be in order. I mean, we don't seem to have a lot of our agendas these days. I mean, we could have done it tonight, there's, there's time, so let's get it sooner than later would be my recommendation.
Anyone else? Okay, any other board members with comments or anything else? Okay, great. So our next item on our agenda is an informational item on the, I'm not even sure how to quite say this, but Bruce, maybe you could introduce this with RFI 1: Web Pilot Update. So tell us what's going on with the web.
Sure. So I'll give a brief introduction, because I don't want to stand in the way of a, a good presentation, but through our process, requests for information and/or agenda proposals, a couple of you as board members indicated some questions, and just curiosity, maybe especially to know more about our technology work in the district for students and also the One2Web initiative, and so I ask that Andrew Moore, our Chief Information Officer, and Kelly Sane, who's a Director for Educational Technology, to prepare our presentation, which they've done. It's included as a link to your electronic agenda, and we have updated a couple slides since it was sent out to you originally, but if you link on it now, it's the one that you'll see this evening, so you can reference it. It'll also be on the screens, and certainly our viewing audience can do both. So I want to just acknowledge the excellent leadership that Andrew and Kelly have provided. It's a small and mighty team, the whole IT department, and so under Andrew's leadership, not only have we been able to get our whole operation around technology more efficient and streamlined, it's a good hire there, board, and also as Kelly has joined our team a few years ago, really of notable emphasis on our work around educational technology for students of all ages, and so there are never enough resources in any of the work we do, and that's true of every school district in the state of Colorado, but I do want to acknowledge their excellent leadership, not just in BVSD, but throughout the state and throughout the region. And Kelly recently was recognized as a leader within our administrative group around the state for her excellent work around leadership and technology. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Andrew Moore and Kelly Sane, who are going to tag team this presentation. You might well have some questions when they finish up, so this is in response to your request for more information. So Andrew and Kelly, please.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you for the time to be able to tell you what's happening with our One2Web program, and to certainly be able to answer your questions as we go forward. So President Albright, members of the board, Dr. Messenger, we're just going to jump in and, and take it from there. The first thing I just want to talk about is the digital divide, because the bottom line for what we're doing with One2Web really comes back to that gap that happens in society when some have technology and some do not. So think about yourselves right now. If you had to take away your desktop, your iPad, your mobile phone, and then you were asked for the next six months to participate in society, think about how that would work and how you'd be able to be productive in today's society with the Internet. So President Obama recently made two quotes, well, he's made a lot of quotes, but there were two specifically to this that are really pertinent, and the first one was that the Internet is not a luxury, it's a necessity, and the second one is you cannot connect to today's economy without having access to the Internet. We have students today that either do not have a digital device, or they go home and they can't connect to the Internet, and hence that digital divide opportunity gap starts to happen. So as Kelly starts to discuss the details of One2Web, I'm going to hand out two of our devices. So the first one I'm going to give you is the teacher device, so all teachers right now at Brimfield High School and at Centaurus High School have one of these devices, and the student device, a little bit smaller, rubberized, a little more rugged. It's at Centaurus, it's the first two years that now have this device, and soon Brimfield will have it. Kelly will start and give you more details.
So you may ask, why are we saying One2Web versus One-to-One? One-to-One is traditionally what most people are calling their access to digital equity. We want to call it One2Web because it isn't about the device, it transcends the device. It's about access to information, and so we want to talk about using the device to really create the verbs. It's about what are the students doing with that device? Are they connecting? Are they communicating? Are they thinking critically? Are they creating? So it's beyond the talk about a device. It also gives us the freedom to change the device. If there's anything that you all know happens, is change happens in technology. So when we don't focus on a device, we focus on access, and then it gives us that freedom to change.
Thank you.
All right, the One2Web pilot schools were really, it was an effort to really figure this out, but this all got started one day when Kelly and I were, were basically just brainstorming, and I went into her office and I said, Kelly, one day we may get funding to actually get to a One-for-One initiative, and that's what we were calling it at the time, yet we didn't know what we would do if we got the funding. So we knew we needed to get something going, we needed to get a pilot started, and that was the early discussions that really sparked the Centaurus One-for-Web.
I just wanted to highlight that in this presentation, every single one of these pictures are pictures of our students inside Boulder Valley, so I just wanted to highlight that for you. So why do we need to have our students access these devices? And really, it's because curriculum and information is dynamic, and if we're looking at using digital devices, especially accessing them through a learning management system, it can change. So you can get the most recent, the most relevant information, so that our students can be connected to the world, and we want them to interact with online learning materials, because as those change, as the presentation that you just had changed even from yesterday to today, so you want to be able to get that most recent, that most accurate information. We want to learn beyond the classroom. It is not just in the four walls. We want to be able to have access to resources, to experts, to other classrooms, and to be able to do that connection, so that learning is not just within the four walls of their classroom. And we want that learning anytime, anywhere, any device. That is essential for our students to be successful. So if you ask where a lot of this research and information comes from, if you look at the bottom of the slide, we're referencing Project RED, Future Ready Schools, and the Horizons Report. And at the end of our presentation, I've got hyperlinks to every single one of those, so you can look at that research and information. Some of them have been around for 13 years, which is how it affects student engagement and achievement and success with access to digital devices. So when you look at this, it resonates really well with our information on our own BVSD mission, so all students have a right to an education that helps them realize their greatest potential. Sound familiar? It's like challenging, engaging, civically engaged students. This right should not be affected by geographic location, family income, disability, language, race, or background. And again, that's all, all about us with equity. Technology can help to expand opportunities for students that may not be available to them within the bounds of their physical classrooms, so access to virtual field trips, access to experts. When I'm actually reading a book, I want to be able to connect with the author from that book and have those conversations with them. Technology affords that opportunity for us. So Centaurus, why did we choose Centaurus? Centaurus was a smaller high school, so it was easier for us to be able to look at a pilot, and we had leadership support. It's essential in any type of a program that changes instructional practices that you have leadership support. Right now, two of our classrooms, our ninth graders and 10th graders have access to their own device, and we've seen the instruction change with our teachers through professional development that's been ongoing for two years. We see them engage students in new and relevant ways, and we have a much more streamlined process for Chromebooks and how we add them out into environments for our students. One of my favorite quotes from my, from a student who received a device this year was, "Now I don't have to actually have conversations and engage with when I get to have access to the one computer in our home, and I get to access it and learn when I need to and get my homework done when I need to, not when it's available." That's pretty powerful. We currently have done some professional development with Brimfield, and we've done staff at the beginning of the year. We had five days of professional development with them, and we have ongoing training, just like we did at Centaurus. We have training for parents and students on digital citizenship. We have this as a daily conversation. It's not, I'm going to learn digital citizenship today. Today, we're talking about how to do science, and this is how you are digitally connected and protecting your footprint, and all of those conversations occur within the content and the learning task that they're doing. We've also had training for parents. This is a new learning curve for parents as well. It's not the way that I went to school and learned. So we have conversations with them, we've brought them in at Centaurus, as well as we'll bring them in at Brimfield, so that we can have conversations about how to work with your own student and what this is going to look like, what are your expectations. And just to let you know that we do have a rollout planned this year for October 29th at 7:15 in the morning. If any of you would like to attend, you could come to Brimfield at 7:15 in the morning and see the excitement and energy firsthand with all of our students as they get their own device.
So I want to say one other word about the rollout. It's in, at the end of October, when we did Centaurus, we weren't able to actually roll the devices out until a much later date, mid-year, and the reason for that is there's a lot of prep work that has to go into the program. It's not about the device, it's about the teaching practices and, and the, the way that the, the school culture is to be able to utilize those devices in a, in a very productive way. The learnings from Centaurus have directly mapped to Brimfield and have allowed us to pull that date in to October, so we're happy about that, and I'm pretty confident as we get to the third, fourth, fifth schools, that date will probably move up even more as we go forward. All right, so measuring success. So when we think about measuring things, I, I think you could look at this and say, well, how do we measure One2Web specifically, or the device and what we're doing? And what we want to do is kind of paint that bigger picture in the sense that the device is just a tool. It's a tool to be able to get to all the digital curriculum, it's a tool to get to the things Kelly was talking about, and so you have to think about what you actually measure. So we, we know we're addressing the digital divide. We know that there are students that are going home that had no way to, to, to connect before. One of the students at Centaurus that I got to talk to as we're handing him out, he said, oh my gosh, this, this is my device. He said, you know, I don't have Internet at home. He said, but that's okay, I'm just going to go to Starbucks. I mean, he had already thought ahead on how he was going to get his device connected, and, and, you know, that's one of the great things about our Internet, it is pervasive, although it's not in everybody's home yet. Kelly spoke about the real-time updates of content, and so how do you measure what they can get to today as opposed to what was in a textbook that may have been out of date? So having that information real-time and available to you. And Kelly, I think was sort of joking about updates real-time, but literally, the presentation we sent out with the link that you got on Thursday or Friday, we made a couple tweaks over the weekend, we made a few more adjustments today, and the beauty of the digital world is that you had the presentation. We didn't have to resend anything out to you, and you were able to get the latest just as our students are able to get the latest in this environment. Learning anytime, anywhere, so we believe there needs to be a measurement around that in some way, knowing that the school day is not the only place where learning, learning occurs. Connecting to the web, I think that's the learning anytime, anywhere, making sure you have access to it. Being able to do state and federal assessments on these devices. So the question always comes up, why not iPads as opposed to Chromebooks? And one of the reasons we've gone the Chromebook path is really twofold. The first and the primary one is that the keyboard helps with creation. If you're creating a document, a paper, a presentation, having a keyboard tends to be something that helps with that. If you're reading a book, you can read it certainly on a Chromebook, but a tablet for the consumption of information tends to work, work well. But the assessments require a keyboard. So if you think about the cost to buy an iPad, and then the cost to buy a keyboard, and then the cost to buy a case, you're up to about $700 for a, a regular-sized iPad. And the Chromebooks are currently about $275, what we're paying for them, and so we're able to double the amount of technology we're using by going down this path. One interesting statistic that's come out of Centaurus year over year is that there's been a 33% decrease in behavioral incidents from the year prior to going to One-for-Web is that there's been a 33% decrease in behavioral incidents from the year prior to going to One for Web and now. Now, can we correlate that directly? No. But we do know that the students are definitely more engaged with having their digital device. I think it's going to take us a couple of years to get enough data to really see the trends that are happening. I don't think it'll surprise Kelly or myself or our colleagues that are doing this if we do see a little dip in the assessments with the devices. And the reasons for that is that the educational process is changing. Root force memorization is becoming less. And the ability to critically think is becoming more. So depending on how the assessments are written, there could be a change in that. We'll just have to see as we progress. And then the last thing I want to leave as far as the measurement side goes is this is really their pencil. And we want, when we talk in front of parent groups, in front of teachers, in front of our colleagues, we really do talk about the fact that this really is their way to get their role of educating done. Just like we use pencils when we were growing up. We may have had a graphing calculator that we had, required to have that. This device provides that type of functionality, just in a new way. And we're right in the middle of that transition.
So when we started this process, we asked parents at Centaurus and at Broomfield, what are their hopes? What do they really hope to get out of this program? And the ones that rose up to the top was they wanted increased student collaboration and communication. We are in a digitally connected collaborative world, so we wanted that opportunity for our students. They needed to have access to instructional materials. And that access that in case I forget my textbook, I don't know if any of you have ever had that happen with your own children, but if in case I forget that, I still have all of those resources with me. Or if I forget it, I still have it accessed on my phone. And that's really important for them to know. An improved skill set, so it helps them in their graduation and to be that globally connected society. And learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. Many times, our students, when they publish their work, they will say, "Am I turning this in for the teacher or am I publishing it online?" And then my next question always is, "Why?" Well, if I'm turning it in to teacher, it's ready to go. If I have to publish it online, I still need to work a little bit more. So it's an interesting conversation for them, knowing that if they have a global audience, how much further do they need to work with that global audience? So, we also asked about their areas of concern. We wanted to have parents be a part of that conversation. One of the things that they were worried about was inappropriate use of technology. They were worried about theft and breakage. They were worried about data's safety and security. And screen time did become a conversation. Inappropriate use of technology, when we surveyed them at the beginning of the year and after they've had the devices for six months, that went down tremendously. Our parents did not worry about the inappropriate use because they'd experienced it. Theft and breakage, I can count on one hand how many times we had an issue with breakage. Zero theft. So it's not an issue right now at Centaurus. We have had, we have conversations all the time about protecting your digital footprint and making sure you understand what you're sharing and how important that is. What a great time to have those conversations now instead of later on when it may have ramifications in a job or something else. And then we talk about screen time. So it really is about what is good screen time? If I'm reading on a book and I'm actually interacting with text on my device, is that screen time or is that reading? That's a great conversation to have. If something is being delivered to me, that's screen time. If I'm interacting, then it's a quality of time. And those are really important conversations to talk with our parents about, so that they understand the differences. And then also with our students, to make sure that you want them collaborating, you want them connecting, you want them interacting. You don't want them receiving that information. And that's what the device allows you to do. Then we also talked with our students about what they hoped. Like, what kind of skills do you want to see improving? And you can look at this data. But they wanted to know, "How do I keep my information private?" And we have those conversations with them. I was really worried at the very beginning about taking care of my device. That has gone down since then. And then we talk a lot about publishing and making sure that we produce work online, so that they produce their own digital footprint. Conversations are, "When I want to apply for colleges, I want to refer to the information and the things that I've published as a support of my application." And that's really important for our students.
Before I get into the future of One to Web, I do want to also say that Melissa Barber and myself are going to be, I think, in front of you in October to talk about student data privacy. And that's a work session to have a conversation. I'm very much looking forward to that. We have a lot of information ready to go over with you. And it directly ties into what we're doing with the One for Web effort as well. Okay, so what is our future? We did not invent One to Web just to be at one or two high schools. There's a roadmap and a plan, or I shouldn't say roadmap, there's a plan, we hope to get a roadmap soon, to basically have tablets at the K-2 level, and then Chromebooks, all the way from three through 12. And it's just a question of funding at this point for us to go broader and wider. Today, Centaurus High School and Broomfield High School are funded with one-time funds. It's money that was brought in through the Zayo arrangement. If you remember, we leased air in our conduit for them to be able to pull fiber through. That brought in a sum of money. We used part of that to put the wireless in the elementary schools. We're using the other part of that to be able to fund this pilot. Four years in each school, and so there is no funding at this point beyond that. We need roughly $2.2 million a year into perpetuity in order to have the program broad and wide at all levels. The potential revenue sources, there's really four that we've identified. The first one is general fund allocation, but we all know there's a lot of pressure on the general fund just for daily operations. To monetize our excess fiber, so you've approved going on the ballot this November, the override for Senate Bill 152. That gives us the opportunity to go out and see if we can monetize any of the fiber. But that is a potential source. The technology mill levy, which are restrictive, there are a three-year limit. It's something that could be looked at, but it has its own challenges in that their short-term duration on mills for those specific usages. And then parent support. We know today that many parents are purchasing laptops or Chromebooks or tablets for their students today. Can we shift that model? And we're actually in discussions with Ginger Ramsey, the principal at Broomfield High. Not this year, probably not next year. But as we go into the third year at Broomfield, can we shift the conversation? So maybe we're working with the parents and they're buying the Chromebooks as opposed to buying some other digital device that they're already buying anyway, but in support of the program. There's a lot more to be discussed on the funding and financing. And I know Bruce will be talking with you more as we go forward. I will say on the trajectory that we're on right now, so we've done two years, two schools, we have 55 schools. And Kelly pointed out to me that if we stay at the current rate of one school a year, I'll be 107 when we roll out the last school.
I will not be here. Sorry, I tell you we roll out the last school.
Hold on, you're at this with me.
So we wanted to talk about how this is connected with our innovation standards. When we look at the innovation standards, we don't want to design schools that means I'm going to go do tech today. We want to make sure that we design schools that allows the learning task and access to the tools that meet that learning task. So we need to make sure that when we're looking at our future for our new schools, that we're having this thought process in place about making sure that we do have access for digital tools. So right now, Centaurus is already one of our new schools, future new schools. And then they already are on the path. And so we need to have these conversations when we think about not just the four builds described here, but all of our schools. So I also wanted to just talk to you about other pieces that are a part of this. We have done an ebook initiative for the past two years. And we've worked with elementary and middle school. And again, this is about access. Access to digital content at home. So one of my favorite quotes from an elementary student up at Netherland was, "You mean I can go home, I can get on my device, I can check out a book, and I don't have to go to a library? I don't have to ask my mom or dad to take me there. I don't have to go down to the library at the elementary school. I can have access to it." And I said, "Yep, you can check it out," using that digital content. So that empowerment and that excitement level for students to be able to access it when they need it, or if they're at grandma's house, somebody else, that's important to be a part of this conversation, that we need to have access to devices as well as content.
Okay, and then the last slide before we just open up for questions. I do want to just talk a little bit about the IT department, what we've had to do to support this. We have deployed a little over 11,000 Chromebooks in the last two years. That's in addition to roughly the 10,000 other devices that are already in the district. So basically doubling the number of devices that we're supporting. The good news is, I haven't asked Bruce or Leslie from RFTE to support this. Instead, we're shifting our model and the way we operate. The wonderful thing about Chromebooks is that there's no hard drive in them. There's no motherboard that needs to be replaced. The devices are what we call recyclable. So where my team used to go out, and if there was a problem with a desktop or laptop, we would try to replace the hard drive or the memory, or whatever part was broken. That is highly expensive due to the fact that it takes a lot of labor to do that. The Chromebook model, as we continue to move towards it, it is if it's broken, you remove it, we recycle it, we get another one. And that keeps things moving, keeps the devices out there working. It has, I won't always say it's been smooth, because we are changing jobs and the way people operate as we do that. But it's in place. I'm really proud of the team for what they've done in this transition. And then the last thing I want to say before we get to questions is that you may ask, "Well, how come there isn't a goal specifically for One to Web or for the digital divide?" And there is not a specific goal, because we believe this technology is an enabler of the other strategic initiatives that are out there. And each of those has a piece of the technology. And I think it's important that we don't talk about the technology, because that's just the tool. We need to talk about the teaching practices and the goals that have been rolled out and success effect, and how that plays in and how we support those broader initiatives. All right, and that's our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much. That was a lot of information packed in here. And thank you for this nice way to look at it on the screen here and on the screen for the audience and television people. It was great, it was really informative. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Board members, comments or questions? Jim?
So, thank you. I was at the presentation at Centaurus for the parents. I thought you did a wonderful job bringing the parents along. Obviously, parents are in different places in regards to technology. It was always a reflective back. Well, that would be a good conversation to have. And we can help you with that. And here's some resources, here's a link, here's a... It was great. I recognize many of those kids in the pictures. I can tell you, my daughter's Chromebook has maybe left her hand at night, maybe when she's asleep. But she is absolutely fascinated, even though she had plenty of technology before with just, I think it's just more integrated into the internet, the Google community. So if her enjoyment is any indicator, I think you're onto something big. And hopefully, if the funding doesn't materialize, but we're still seeing some positive results, well, maybe we can work with the legislature and figure some stuff out. So, thank you.
That would be wonderful. Thanks.
Gina?
Hi, thanks for the presentation. It was great. I had a couple of questions. The first is, what are they not allowed to access at the high school level? So what kind of things? Because it mentions Facebook and Twitter, but I'm just curious. What are they able to do? And can they access porn and stuff like that?
Yeah, so throughout the whole district, we restrict the web to what FERPA or COPA says that we need to restrict it to. So there's no adult content, there's no gambling. And there's a few other small pockets that are out there. And the law is written that we have to do our best effort. So we employ a company that actually categorizes websites. That doesn't mean that every website at every moment in time has been properly categorized and that we're blocking everything, especially images can get through. But we do our best and we think, you know, we have a good product that helps us manage all of that. As far as the learning, I'll let Kelly speak to that, because it's a teacher dialogue in what they should be doing in the classroom.
So if you would ask our students, they would say, "Everything's blocked." And that's really not the case. But they would like to be able to have access to a ton of information. And we do, we give them that. But we have great conversations about if you're searching for this, why do you think it may be blocked? Or, "Let's talk with your teacher and let's see if it should be something that should be opened up." Because it might be completely relevant to the topic that you're discussing at that time. And so, teachers have the ability to open some things up. But students are regulated by what we have for the FERPA and SIPA. But it's amazing, the pieces that they produce. And they do not get frustrated with the things that are being blocked right now. They are excited about the access to the information and the creation that they can of the information that they are accessing every single day.
And what about advertising?
So there's lots of extensions that you can put on. And those are the extensions that we talked with our students that get rid of any ads. So all that stuff is blocked when you're looking inside something. So if you're doing a Google search, I can put up an ad blocker and it will block all of that information.
So we're also in the Google for Education. So if you're logged into your Google account, you're not getting ads anyway. It's just if you're not logged in and you're just surfing, that you could get targeted marketing. But that doesn't really happen, because the kids need to log into the Chromebook. And once you're logged into the Chromebook, then Google knows who they are, and then that gets blocked. We do block the social media sites at the elementary schools, so Twitter, Facebook, Snapchat. But they're not blocked starting in sixth grade up. It is interesting, our security engineer came to me at the end of last year and he said, "Snapchat just surpassed YouTube as the number one app." Now, if you don't know what Snapchat is, you might want to take a look. But it is a communication tool where you can text, and that's not where all the bandwidth is going. But you could text, and the texts have a limited duration. And quote, "They go away." But we teach in digital citizenship, nothing ever really goes away on the internet. But you could do videos now, and you can do storyboards. And so, the kids will use that to, you know, capture whatever they're doing and share with their friends or their parents or whoever it may be. And so that uses bandwidth. We have plenty of bandwidth, so I don't want to scare anybody with that with the upgrade over the summer. We're using about a little over two gigabit today. We were limited at one gigabit last year and we ran into problems. We can go up to four gigabit right now with no problem at all.
And then my other question is related to screen time at the elementary level. I'm not aware, I have no concerns about the high school level. But at the elementary level, they're still recommending one to two hours of screen time regardless of what it is. And how do we, how are we messaging that to parents so that they can balance that in the evening? And I already know that most kids are exceeding that. But there's just so much research supporting that limit at this point that I'd like to think that we're being pretty aggressive with our messaging.
We have great conversations with that, with all of our parents. You know, one of the very first things that we talked about with high school even is that during dinner, that device has gone away. You know, when you go to bed, we talk with parents about charging it all in one local place so that you know that they're not accessing. So a lot of the research on screen time has actually changed. And if you want to go into any one of these, especially our One to Web research information, the screen time, the AAP actually came out with a new revised standard that says, "Screen time where it's passively received, like television, should be limited." Screen time when I'm taking blocks and I'm blocking and I'm putting them together and spelling a word, and a child screams out, "I got it," is not screen time. It's not delivered. It's an actual process. And they have research that's shown that the same mental capacity of what's happening in the brain is happening when it's an interactive app or it's an interactive action versus something that's just being delivered. So those are great conversations to have with our parents and have with students. And we talk a lot about ways that you can have those conversations and ways that you can say, "All right, this is the amount of time, and what were you doing on that screen at that time? Were you just watching a YouTube video about cats, which I know our elementary kids wouldn't? But that's a very different conversation than, 'Am I creating a story and putting together a puppet pal presentation where I invented my own story? I recorded my voice, I added in images, and I created my own fairy tale.'" So those are great conversations to have.
I was just curious if you could give some specific examples of lessons that high school teachers are using, have been using at Centaurus perhaps?
So I can give you a fantastic lesson that was just recently done at a language arts, when they were actually going through and they created their own blogs about the book. And then they connected with the author, and the author was tweeting and blogging back and forth about the actual passages. So that, all of a sudden, is not something that could be done without, with just paper and pencil. Because even if you sent it in a letter, it would take months for that person to respond back to you. And that interaction, they were so excited. They're like, "Let's create our own Twitter account so that we can tweet with the author and find out new updates." So that's a pretty exciting when you think of language arts. When you think of some of our math, they've been talking with experts at NCAR and actually having some of their information back and forth. And they're visiting with that person and they're saying, "All right, this is my thought process. This is what I was thinking of doing." They actually got a view of some of the different computing devices that they had through a Google Hangout. So it's that connecting with experts that's really important. I think one of the best conversations with, talking with students about collaborative projects. In collaborative projects, a lot of times you had to find a time that you all could get together and visit at a library and do something. And people are involved in lots of different sports or activities or something like that. So they could still be collaborative, but it might be asynchronous. So they would get together and work on their projects. And then you could see, "Oh, well, Tommy just did this part that he was in charge of. And then I can go back and look at mine when I have time to." And that conversation made students, when they got together, then they were like, "Oh, let's tweak and..." let's tweak and change what this is based upon what you just put into your presentation and what I'm going to add." And that was really powerful. And I think it was the first time that our students have said, really for the first time, I could see what every single individual contributed to in a group project. It wasn't just the one person taking over and kind of controlling. Each one had a step in that process, and that empowerment was really exciting for our students.
Thank you. Tom?
Thanks for the presentation and all the work that you're doing there to bring this forward. I know that when we were talking one-to-one at Monarch, a lot of these issues came up and concerns and measures and so on and so forth. Out of my curiosity, do you have a place that you put your lessons learned that I could take a look at? I mean, you mentioned a couple ones. You answered Jenny. You mentioned rollout, lessons learned from Centaurus now that you're implementing. Is there a place you have a document that you put these together?
So if you actually go to our website, we have the whole step process of all the different steps that each school has to go through to be able to be a part of it, so it's in there. And then that document has changed throughout the process. After we went through some first pieces with Centaurus, we changed it before we went to Broomfield. And from those learnings, we decided to make sure that all professional development, this is just one instance, all professional development would be for all teachers, and they all received a device at the beginning of the year versus the device each year that the students would receive one, just because that professional development was an awesome opportunity for all teachers. So those are just two examples, but really, everything is already on the website.
So you're rolling those lessons learned in the new documentation, so you don't really say, "Gee, we learned this," so it's in a holding bin, and I mean, if someone were to come to you from, say, another district and say, "Gee, what should I know here? Do you have a list of lessons learned?" You wouldn't have anything. You would just have our process, right?
I think what you'd find on the website for the most part are the updated documents on how to roll out the program. The steps and the stumbles along the way may not be prevalent, but Kelly and I talk with our peers all the time. In fact, we did a joint presentation up at Case on the partnership between IT and EdTech, and that was a rich dialogue that turned into, "Well, how did you do this?" And so whenever we have the opportunity, we're certainly sharing more on a one-to-one or in that case, an audience discussion on what worked and what did not work.
Okay, great. A question for you, just to change the subject a little bit, on the overall cost. You talked about the Chromebooks a little bit. What are the costs of districts for those two devices you showed us?
Yeah, so they're both pretty close. The student device, the smaller one, is about $275 with management software, and that's important because these devices do become the student's device. We encourage them to put stickers on them. It's theirs to take when they graduate from high school, but we have software on them so that when it comes to assessment time, we can lock the device down and we can, you know, basically have them do their assessments. The teacher devices are about $20 more. It's not a huge differential between the teacher device and the student device. So we like to say somewhere right around $300.
Okay, so when we turn one in or refurbish it, do we get a credit for that? I mean, does it just, you toss it?
We are not looking to refurbish. We feel if we can get four years out of them, and that's part of the pilot, will these all last four years?
Yeah.
Then that'll be the lifespan of the device.
I just didn't know if Google had a program that actually repaired them, for example.
Yeah, no. And, you know, it is interesting, even though they're Chromebooks, they're not a Google device, although Dr. Messenger uses a Google device for his Chromebook. The ones that I showed you, the teacher device is by HP and the student device is by Dell, and we're constantly evaluating what the devices are. Most of the Chromebooks in the district are Samsung, and those are cart-based models. We just felt for the students taking them home, that Dell, which I think it's about seven or eight dollars more than the Samsung, it's just more rugged, and that was important to us in that decision-making process.
Okay. Could you talk to me a bit about infrastructure within our schools, you know, wireless access capability? That's got to be a large cost, right?
It is, and we're fortunate that we have upgraded all the wireless in the last four years in the entire district. So the elementary schools were done two summers ago, and the high schools were done, high schools and middle schools, the year before that. Now, I say that, it was done with the latest technology at that point in time. As the new schools are being built and Centaurus having the significant renovation that it is planning to have, we will be going out to bid for a different technology for those new schools and for Centaurus, simply because the technology's changing. Wireless is getting faster primarily. The new standard is called AC. I won't go into the details. We use N right now. AC is the new one, and that should be ready. The second generation of AC should be ready by the time we go. The good news is we'll figure that out, and then as we need to replace wireless throughout the rest of the district, we'll have that standard set at that point in time.
So you will know how often you need to refurbish those, that infrastructure and the cost of doing it?
Exactly.
Okay. One last question related to what Tim was talking about with access control. When a student is at Starbucks, what controls are on the book there?
Yeah, great, great question. So we talked to the parents about this, that the filtering occurs on our Internet. It does not occur on the device itself. And so when the students go to Starbucks or they go home or they go to McDonald's or wherever they may end up, whatever the filtering policy of that establishment is what is in place. And at the parent evening, we spend time talking about that. It is then a family decision on what they're able to access. It's only within the school, the school environment that we do filter.
Thank you.
I do also want to say that all of our Centaurus students got to take home their learning tool this summer, and all of them brought back their learning tool in perfect working order, and they were very excited about being able to continue their learning all summer and not have to turn it in. And I will also say that our teachers at Centaurus had not had a laptop. They all had desktops, so this was their first time to get a 24-hour access, anytime, anywhere, learning as well.
Shelley?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a few questions, a lot of them you answered as you went through it. The $2.2 million cost, that's every year, right?
Yeah, it's $2.2 million dollars into perpetuity. Every year we would need that, and that's basically the cost to pay salaries for a couple additional staff for Kelly's team. That's a small portion of it, and then to buy the devices. The device is the major portion of that $2.2 million.
And does it also include the training that needs to go with this?
So Kelly's team, that is the group that does the training. So Kelly has four teachers that work for her on her staff, so we have a staff of five right now, and we know that we'd have to grow that in order to expand the program beyond where we're at today.
So that expansion's included in the $2.2 million?
Correct.
So, you know, there are trade-offs associated with spending money for that versus something else, and, you know, as I look at it, there's no question that our kids need to understand how to use technology, and we're all on our computers all the time. I frankly believe they already know how to do that without any help from the school district, but they're certainly our kids without access. So have you tried to figure out what percentage of our students do not have access? Would it tie closely with free and reduced lunch, or how would we estimate that?
Yeah, so I don't have an exact figure, but it definitely would tie to free lunch, for sure. What we do know is in the one housing development that we have run BVSD Internet into, we have about 85 students that are in that development that are getting BVSD Internet. There's some new technology we're just trying to look at. You may have heard the analog TV wavelength. So remember, we went from TVs that were analog to digital, and we all had to either upgrade our TVs or we had to get a little box for our old analog TVs. So that spectrum that the analog signal is coming over, there's a couple examples now of that being used to do Internet, and it's basically wireless Internet over that spectrum that'll go about five miles. And so I'm just now starting to do the research to see if we can't tap into that in some way in order to provide more access to those students that don't have access.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it comes to a point where we, you know, only have so much money and we like to spread it around a little bit, would it make sense to focus on those kids that absolutely do not have access?
So Dr. Messenger's been wonderful working with us, and that's part of those four different ways to fund and really figuring out, okay, what part of our population really needs that help, and then focusing on that part of the population. It's a complex discussion, but Dr. Messenger and myself and Kelly and a few others are working through this, you know, as we're trying to find what that right balance is.
Some of this is also, though, let me just add, is it's not just, "Do I have a computer at home? Is that computer being used by my two other siblings? And do I need to kind of barter time for which I could use that? Or do I have to wait till mom or dad come home and then I could possibly use that laptop?" So that conversation is also a part of this, not just, "Do I have access? Is that device my own device and I can bring it to school every single day? Or is it the family computer that we all get to have access to?"
So if I could just, if you're going to go to a new topic, so I think that, so this is the conversation I think we need to have. So part of it is the pilots was to see, so how's this working? And we've learned a lot, and to Tom's question, I think that, I think reasonably, this is something I'd actually like to do some polling, surveying with our parents to say, "So if we had a device for under $300 and it could do these things and you're transitioning into middle school, would you consider buying it? And could we help facilitate that purchase through the school district to make it easier for parents? And then, so when they buy that first device or the second device, if they've already are sharing one, is this something they would consider doing? And then who wouldn't be able to do that? And then maybe we could resource that." But I think there is real value of getting uniformity on this for the reasons that have been shared with you, and not unlike when many of us went to school and purchased calculators, and they were as expensive as these devices or more. And it was an expectation we'd get certain ones because of the uniformity, and so that's an area we're exploring. Some at middle school recently went through this, and we've had good conversation with Adam and his team about, so how many parents were able to do that? And, you know, we understand that's not necessarily representative of our whole school district, but I think we're trying to learn lessons from others on this as well because, you know, to find this level of resourcing right away at least would be difficult, although we want to keep expanding as quickly and as much as is appropriate. So anyway, I just, we're very much in that conversation right now.
Well, what's going to be my next question is, do we have any estimate of how much monetizing our fiber might contribute to the cost?
Not at this point in time, and part of the reason for that is that I can't get into any serious conversations until I know I can actually negotiate for it. It's, you know, no one...
You don't even have a guess.
You're right, exactly. But we'll definitely go through that. One other point, we are going to pilot at Centaurus the opportunity for juniors and seniors to purchase devices through BVSD. So you can imagine if you're a junior or senior at Centaurus and they're watching the freshman software with their devices, and especially if you have an older sibling that's a junior or senior, and the parents are like, "Well, hold it. My younger one has it, my older one doesn't." And so we're opening the doors up for parents to purchase. That'll give us more information as we go through this. We don't know if it's five parents, five families, or whether it's going to be 100 families that want to do this, but we will know by October.
Thanks. So one of my other questions is, you know, if I was looking at this to approve an expenditure of this size in perpetuity, you know, I would have some questions about, are we actually meeting the needs of the kids who actually need them? I mean, because a lot of homes have four computers in them, right?
Right.
And high-speed Internet, and do we really need to be supplying another device to those families would be one question. Another question I would have is, do we really want to be supplying them to kindergarteners? I have an issue with that. I'm not sure screen time is just not screen time. I think it's the passive and the engaging part. You know, there is a differentiation there for sure, but any time on the screen is not playing with their brothers and sisters. It's not being outside in nature. It's still screen time. You're still looking at a screen even if you're doing something, interacting with that device. So I'm not sure I want that for our five-year-olds in the district.
Yeah.
And I would need an explanation of why that's important to have for five, six, and seven-year-olds. I can go there with middle school, you know.
All wonderful questions. We look forward to actually getting the program that far along where we can have those discussions and all of them. Very good questions that we need to be able to answer.
And then I think lastly, I, you know, I've just been thinking a lot about the fact that we may not be getting a lot more money coming our way from the legislature. And, you know, when I think about $2.2 million over five years, for example, you know, there's, you know, $10, $11 million. Now, that's 150 teachers in this district that we would not be adding, that we could be reducing class size, addressing, you know, special ed needs, you know, ELL needs. That's a huge trade-off for me. So I would need to really understand what the true benefit of this is, not just, I mean, I hear what you're saying about how this is access to everything in the world, you know, and therefore it has value. I understand that. But we need to be concerned with what it's going to do in our district versus what 150 teachers would do over the next five years. So that's what I would be looking for before I would be ready to approve this.
Yeah, we appreciate the feedback, and we certainly will go the direction of the will of the board. Very important discussions to have.
So, but thank you. This was very helpful to understanding what's going on out there.
Sure. Dana, you bet.
Yeah, so have we heard from parents or students from the Boulder High and Fairview communities? And does Netherlands have One to Web? I don't know.
No, Netherlands does not.
But are you hearing, because I don't have high school-aged kids, and I've, you know, they never, no one I know talks about this in my community, which is more the Boulder side. But are you hearing from parents that they want to have this in their schools? Or is that something that we would want to survey as well? Because I don't know what the community is looking for on this topic.
Yeah, so the principals I talk with, now, of course, the principal at Boulder High, we're in a transitionary period. I'll be going out there in just a matter of weeks to talk with them. So we're not hearing a lot out of Boulder High. Fairview, there are pockets of teachers that would love to have this go, but it's a cultural change. It is about the principal saying, "This is something that we want to do." Monarch High School, Jerry Anderson is looking at this because she has a BYOD program, but she struggles a little bit in the sense that those machines cannot be used for assessments, and so that causes some challenges. She has some parents that don't buy necessarily the specifications that we recommend, and so they have less capable radios in them, so they don't always connect to our Internet the way that we would like them to. And so there are pockets of discussions we've had, but I think all the principals know we're doing the best we can with the funding we have, and so there hasn't been a lot of pressure, at least to me, during this timeframe. Dr. Messenger may have a broader perspective.
Well, I, no, I would agree all that, Anderson. I just think there's an increasing awareness, just like your awareness now is increasing, and I think our other schools are watching with interest as this unfolds, and each of our school communities are different demographically and other ways. So I think lessons learned, but I think over time, especially students who don't have access consistently or access at home, I think that's probably the growing angst that we hear mostly is, "What can we do about that?" And I think, well, the advantage of the pilots is that we're learning a lot from this experience so that when we go something district-wide, and so maybe it's targeted, just like Shelley was talking about, but at least I think we'll have a better sense of how to proceed with that. And again, if we can do this buy program where parents might do that, then it's trying to create some uniformity. But we were visiting today in preparation for this evening in that, so I said, "So Andrew and Kelly, things have changed quite a bit the last few years, huh?" And they said, "Yeah." So where are we going to be in five years? And so, you know, we just want to be really thoughtful about next steps with this, not just because of the resource management issue, but also, sort of Tom's point about the wireless, I mean, there's certain things we're pretty confident are going to be needed, and wireless is one of those. But the actual device, how it connects, how we engage with it, or more importantly, how the students do, it will look different in five years and different in 10 years. So I think we just want to be as dynamic and responsive to this as we can and know that it's, that's the playing field we're in. But I think we will continue to hear from, especially from the families, because more and more our teachers are utilizing this technology. I mean, the Google environment around the educational Google environment is really powerful. So when I went to Centaurus during the rollout and could engage in conversation with the students and talk to them about Google Docs and how we use them in our work and how they use them in their work, I mean, it's an environment we're all in, and it's very responsive and I think really productive and so, but we haven't been at that all that long either, and it'll probably look different in three to five years, so, yeah.
I'll just add that analogy to a scientific calculator is terrific, but really brought back a lot of memories just now that I had forgotten.
Right. And I still have my daughters. I'd be glad to sell to you. You're going to buy.
One thing that I would like to leave you with is that at the beginning of this presentation, I asked you to just pause for a moment and think about what it would be like if you Tonight, Boulder Valley School District has students at home, and they are not able to fully participate in the educational experience, because they either don't have internet, or they don't have the devices. And ultimately, that is what we are trying to solve, so that we have access for all.
I think that's our goal. Make sure that every kid gets what they need, every student, every child, every school.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any other comments from board members? Thank you very much for your presentation. It was really interesting in terms of the content and the possibilities, and letting us hear about the pilot. It's real important. I think we, you've heard some questions about the budget, which is a ways down the line about what might happen. But for the pilot, great job. Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you very much.
Or if I could, I just give one, recognize Andrew and Kelly's leadership with this, and their team, there are a lot of folks that are doing this work in the school, as well as at the district level. So thank you for that. And when I was in Washington D.C. this summer, working on various issues, this was a topic of significant conversation. So I came back to share with our team here, that these conversations around access, and the internet, and devices is a big conversation around the country. How do we close that divide, so that all of our students are in a place to learn? And what is it about middle-appropriate age? I mean, that's also part of that conversation. So, anyway, we share the joy and the pain with the rest of the country on this one. So, thanks. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is action items for the consent grouping, and I'll rate them. 7.1, personnel items. 7.2, approval of minutes for the August 25, 2015 regular meeting. 7.3, acceptance of donation from Flatirons Elementary. 7.4, acceptance of donation from Foothill Elementary. 7.5, award of contracts, food services. 7.6, award of contract for Monarch High School, repair of athletic field turf. 7.7, award of contract for uninterruptible power supply systems. 7.8, RICO Digital Document Archive Statement of Work. Do I have a motion to approve? Sam, is there a second? Jenny? Is there any item that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, are there any questions on any items? Tom?
Question on 7.6, award contract from Monarch High School. So according to our board documents, this was already started, July 22nd, was finished August 15th. Can you explain why it's coming to us now after the fact for approval?
So in June, you approve a resolution that allows us, during the month of July, when the board is not in session, to be able to engage in contracts and works. And so our commitment, when we do that as a part of the resolution, is that we bring it back for formal board action, if it requires that. So there's, you know, it could be activity that occurs that's under $50,000 that I would normally approve, or under $100,000 that the board president could do. This exceeds that amount. So, as had been, some other contracts we brought back to you around activity that occurs in July. So this work was, that was, it falls in that window, so it's coming back to you now for your final approval of $200 and some thousand.
Yeah, I understand, I figured this is what it was, because things happened over the summer.
Yeah, right.
I think, last board meeting, there were a couple items like that that already started.
Yeah, yeah.
So it would really be helpful to me to understand those situations, so, you know, it's not something that's already done deal and asking for the approval.
Okay, so it falls in that window.
Be very helpful, and if there are cases like this, just a word or two of explanation would be great.
Sure, sure, about the timing of the work, yeah. You bet.
Other questions? Comments?
I, just a quick question.
Sure, Sam.
Since I see Chef and Cooper in the audience. Hi, thank you for all your work, provide healthy, nutritious, and delicious meals. I had a quick question about this contract with the produce provider. Does that include our efforts to buy as much locally grown produce as possible, or is that a separate item? And how much do we spend on that, if it is separate?
Local produce is separate, and it's under this threshold that we're bringing to the board. I can tell you that last year, we bought 50,000 pounds of local produce, and, yeah, 50,000 pounds of local produce, and about 150,000 pounds of local beef and chicken. And we're just starting this year, so I don't know exactly where we're gonna be this year. But that's outside of that, that's a number of small contracts with small vendors.
Thanks, Sam, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Shelley?
While you're there, Ann? While you're there. You know, it's just shocking what vegetables cost, you know? $750,000 for vegetables. So I'm just wondering, how does that compare to last year? How much have prices gone up in the last year or so? Do you know?
I don't know exactly how much prices have gone up, and I think it really depends on what the items are. I can tell you that our hardest-hit items were milk and beef this year, more than produce so far. A lot of the produce are what we get are what's called commodities, so we buy a lot of carrots and celery and onions and potatoes, and those prices aren't really going up as much as we see the local produce. And so we're, you know, we're really committed to local produce, but we have to keep the quantities of them lower than we can what we buy in the open market because of the price differential.
And--
But our food costs are percent, so maybe this will help answer the question. Our food costs are percent of revenues has been stable at around 40% for a while, so we balance, when we see something go up, we balance trying to buy something a little better to keep that, to keep the overall food cost stable from year to year.
I know at one point, we were talking with city council about how maybe we could join forces to, you know, maybe keep the cost of buying local food down. Have you had any conversations with them?
As a matter of fact, I spent the better part of today in a strategic planning session with Making Local Food Work, which is the group that includes the city council, and the county commissioners, and the university. And we've been continuing those discussions about how to better do that, and the idea of a food hub, and how that might work, and how we can do some joint buying, and maybe in the future, joint processing.
Okay, thanks.
So those discussions are continuing.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Bruce, you have any comments on, no? Okay, good. Okay, seeing no other questions, Sandy, will you call the vote?
Albright?
Yes.
Belville? Yes. Benford? Fuqua? Yes. Marquess? Yes. Myers? Yes. Reed? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is agenda setting. Colleagues, is there anything you'd like to talk about? Have the agenda-setting committee talk about.